Okay, commissioners, I'm gonna start the webinar in three, two, one.
Okay, great. Welcome to the special meeting for LAUSD Redistricting Commission for Wednesday, October 6, 2021, at 6:30 PM for our public input hearing to gather testimony on our draft maps. So as we begin, can we do a roll call and then we'll have all the commissioners introduce themselves?
Yes, Mr. Chair, when I call your names, commissioners, please announce that you're present. Chair Luis Sanchez.
Present.
Vice Chair Ambreis.
Present.
Commissioner Ana Teresa Dehan.
Present.
Commissioner Wilma Franco. She is not present. Commissioner Wendy Grul.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Kristi Hernandez. Thank you. Commissioner Gil Hurtado.
Present.
Commissioner Elizabeth Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Yvette Lopez Ledesma, not present. Commissioner Lorraine Lundquist.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Heather Repening. Not present. Commissioner Antonio Sanchez. Not present. Commissioner Barry Wade.
Present.
By my count, that is, give me one second, one. Nine commissioners present, Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. So why don't we begin? Welcome once again to our attendees. We're gonna do some announcements in multiple languages. We'll start with Farsi, then Tagalog, then Spanish, before we commence the meeting. Speaking with the Farsi announcement.
Nasser, I think we are waiting for the Farsi announcement.
Yeah. Okay, my name is Nasser Horiad. I'm the interpreter and as the commissioner mentioned, we're welcoming all the people, participants into this meeting of LAUSD for very visit the
If I can interject real quick, Nasser, can you inform the public how they can connect to the interpretation channel should they need Farsi interpretation?
And how is that?
So they need to select the globe on the bottom of the Zoom platform and then they can select Farsi.
Okay. Maybe not get through online has a mission. Point of safety zoom on legal conan way. Globe has a interpretation on John between click or conin. But show Malhag machine being missing.
Great, thank you. Can we do the same announcement in Tagalog?
My god, I'm gonna be posted a lot. Can I get a lot for me? You must have a ditto. I mean, it's a commissioner party now for sale in USD. I don't put it so on that. Oh, okay. You put on a Nakanian you know, man, pull up, I got salient, I got a log. A globe on a symbol of John at Pili in your pocket, para para Tagalog Filipino, para para, maybe the mother of the pagsasalin, para para, kind of Indian, I'm a slammer.
Thank you. And now in Spanish.
Well, buenas tardes to todos. Bienvenidos to our reunion que he is here in uno minuto. Solamente una recordatorio para aquellos que necesiten interpretación. Pueden ir a la parte inferior de la pantalla donde encontrarán el icono que es un mundo o una esfera como le quiere llamar. Donde va a poder escoger español para recibir esa información simultáneamente. Tenemos un intérprete en ese canal que estará dando esos comentarios, sus interpretaciones. Muchas gracias y nuevamente bienvenidos.
Thank you for those announcements. So now we could have our commissioners introduce themselves with their name. Their who appointed them to the commission, if they have an ex parte communication to report and then any remarks or welcome that you may have for attendees today. So once again, Luis Sanchez, I'm the chair of the commission. I was appointed by school board member Monica Garcia. I have no ex parte communication to report and I'd like to thank everybody for joining us tonight. It's important that we hear your public comments on behalf of our maps and thank you once again for being a part of this important process. So we will now go to Vice Chair Ambreis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea Ambreis. I was appointed by LA Mayor Eric Garcetti to this commission and I have no ex parte communications to report tonight. Really looking forward to hearing from the feedback from community members and very much welcome even kind of the the smallest experience or comment that folks would like to share with us because we really are taking all of those comments back into account for our discussions and decisions that we're making. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ambreis. Can we now hear from Commissioner Grul? Commissioner Grul, if you could unmute and just not sure she can't hear us, seems like, but why don't we go back, come back to her, let's do Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Elizabeth Johnson. I was appointed by Dr. McKenna in the first district. I have no ex parte communication to report. And I'd like to welcome all of the public and any parents or students that are listening in this evening and looking forward to any comments that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Can we now hear from Commissioner Lundquist?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Lorraine Lundquist. I was appointed by school board member Scott Schmerson in Board District Three. I don't have any ex parte communications to report and I'm just grateful to everyone who's coming out to tell us your thoughts on this redistricting process. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Can we now hear from Commissioner Ruttado?
Yes, my name is Gil Hurtado. I'm a council member in the city of Southgate and I was appointed to this committee by school board member Jackie Goldberg. I do not have any ex parte communications to report and I want to thank everybody for participating in this process as we are an advisory board and need everyone's input so that we can make the best informed decision. Again, we're an advisory board and hopefully at the end, the council does listen to what we have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruttado. Can we now hear from Commissioner Wade?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Barry Wade, councilman for the city of La Mita and I was appointed by then school board member Dr. Richard Vladovic from the seventh district and now representing Tanya Ortiz Franklin for the seventh district. No ex parte communications tonight. I'm pleased to see we already have over 50 people in attendance and looking forward to hearing what people did to say. And also, I'm gonna need to leave a little bit early possibly, so please, I hope nobody takes offense and we'll be able to read your comments afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wade. Thank you for letting us know about you leaving early. So Commissioner Hernandez.
Good evening, everyone. Kristi Hernandez and I was appointed by the Los Angeles City Mayor Eric Garcetti. I have no ex parte communication to report and I just want to thank everyone for taking time this evening to participate in this important process and for being part of this democratic process. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. I'm gonna go back to Commissioner Grul. Can you hear us now?
I can. Sorry about that.
Okay, there we go.
Um, thank you and just I have no ex parte communication and enthusiastic about here, the public hearing. I'm sorry I could not make on Monday at a work conflict, but listen to the video and look forward to the public hearings we have today. Thank you so much and thank you to our leaders.
Thank you, Commissioner Grul. You were also appointed by, just let us know.
I'm so sorry. I was appointed by Nick Melvoine.
Okay, thank you.
Board member.
Thank you. Genesis, do you have a question? I know you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just have a, thank you, Mr. Chair, just wanted to remind the interpreters for Tagalog Aurora and for Farsi Rahim that the entire meeting needs to be interpreted right now. So I believe there's nothing being interpreted at the moment and the channels. So if you can please interpret the entire meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. So let's head back to Commissioner Repening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Heather Repening and I am appointed by Mayor Eric Garcetti. I have no ex parte communications to report. And I just want to welcome everyone and we really thank you for joining us. This process does not work without you and without your your input. So please join us tonight and stay involved. We'll be making, you know, recommendations to the city council and so this is a step in the process. But we are getting closer to where the final decision will be made. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Repening. Can we now go to Commissioner Franco?
Good evening. Buenas tardes. Thank you. I'm Dr. Wilma Franco. I was appointed by council president Nury Martinez. And there's, I don't have any ex parte communications tonight and then just looking forward to the feedback from the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Franco. And then Commissioner Dehan.
Hi, good evening. Buenos noches. Ana Teresa Dehan appointed by the council president Nury Martinez. No ex parte communications and go Dodgers.
Thank you, Commissioner Dehan. So just Steve, just to be confirmed, I had, we had eight initially on the roll call and we added three more, right? So we're at 11. Want to make sure I didn't miss anyone on the introductions.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we added 11. Commissioner Franco and Commissioner Repening, join us.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So now we will move to the item notice for public hearing. We will begin with item number one, which is a public input testimony regarding LAUSD redistricting, draft maps and communities of interest. The first item is introduction and presentation on commission structure and process and draft maps. What I'd like to do right before we do this presentation, because it's a critical part of the meeting, is I want to make sure we do another set of announcements in Spanish, Farsi and Tagalog. So why don't we begin with Spanish first and then we'll be Tagalog and then Farsi.
Courts, one person, one vote decisions. The United States Constitution's equal protection clause. The United States Supreme Court has held that race cannot be used as the predominant factor in drawing district lines, such that traditional redistricting criteria are subordinated to the considerations of race. The Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. The Voting Rights Act prohibits voting practices which result in a denial or abridgement of the right to vote on account of race, color, or language minority status. Redistricting plans must be analyzed under the Voting Rights Act to ensure they do not deprive minority voters of an equal opportunity to elect representatives of their choice in violation of the act. Traditional redistricting criteria. Federal, state, and city law have established several traditional redistricting criteria, all of which shall be considered to the extent feasible when drawing district lines. What are the traditional redistricting criteria? Contiguity. All parts of a district should connect. Compactness. Districts should be geographically compact. Existing boundaries. Districts should utilize boundaries such as geographic, street, and political boundaries, and conform to high school and attendance zones. Communities of interest. Districts should preserve neighborhoods and communities of people sharing common interests. More information regarding the laws governing the L A U S D's redistricting process are available on the redistricting commission's website. Redistricting twenty twenty-one dot L A city dot org slash L A U S D R C. Thank you.
Now that you've heard the criteria the commission must use and consider when redrawing the L U S D's school board member boundaries, what data was used to draw the draft maps? There are many types of demographic and geographic data the commission used, as well as taking into consideration hundreds of submitted public comments from across the school district. The twenty twenty census data is the official data set the commission uses for the redistricting process. The data is adjusted to take into account the reallocation of the state prison population as required by state law. This data includes the raw population data as well as ethnic data based on population and voting age population. The commission also took into consideration hundreds of written comments and verbal testimony during the first phase of our public input hearing process, including those comments submitted using our public comment form on our website. One of the most important data sets the commission considered is school attendance zones, with an emphasis on high school attendance zones as required by the Los Angeles City Charter. The commission also considered middle school attendance zones and is continuing to examine school feeder patterns to ensure that representation is fair and equitable for residents, parents, and students. The commission considered other community-related data sets as well, including information from the American Community Survey, neighborhood and city boundaries, major freeways, and neighborhood councils in the city of Los Angeles. What are the commission's proposed draft maps? The commission has submitted to the public three draft maps. Draft one A, draft one B, and draft two for your consideration. Feedback and comment. More detailed maps are available on our website at redistricting twenty twenty-one dot L A city dot org forward slash L A U S D R C. Draft one A from north to south keeps two districts whole in the San Fernando Valley, using the four oh five freeway as the major boundary, with only one district over Mulholland Drive. Changes to District Six in the northeast valley include losing portions of Van Nuys, Lake Balboa, and Reseda, while adding the communities of Valley Glen, all of North Hollywood, and Toluca Lake. District Six is the same in all of the draft maps. Changes to District Three in the west and southeast valley include adding all of Lake Balboa and Van Nuys, while losing Valley Glen and portions of the Reseda High School Attendance Zone. Changes to District Four include adding all of the Reseda High School and University High School Attendance Zones while removing portions of the Hollywood High School Attendance Zone east of Highland Avenue. Changes to District One include removing the city of Gardena, using the one ten freeway as the major eastern boundary, and including all of the Los Angeles High School Attendance Zone. Changes to District Two include removing downtown Los Angeles, South Los Angeles, Pico Union, and Westlake, while adding all of unincorporated East Los Angeles, El Sereno, Highland Park, Eagle Rock, Glacell Park, Elysian Valley, Outwater Village, as well as portions of Hollywood. Changes to District Five, including adding downtown Los Angeles, more of South Los Angeles, Pico Union, and Westlake, while losing the other communities described in District Two. And lastly, changes to District Seven in the south include adding all of the city of Gardena and cleaning up the northern boundaries, mostly along high school attendance zones and the one ten freeway. Draft one B is very similar to draft one A with some minor changes to Districts Two and Five. In draft one B, Los Feliz and Silver Lake are removed from District Five and added to District Two, while Coria Town is removed from District Two and added to District Five. Draft Two also keeps two districts whole in the San Fernando Valley, using the four oh five freeway as the major boundary. As stated before, District Six is the same in all of the draft maps. Changes to District Three include removing Studio City, Sherman Oaks, and Valley Village by using Mulholland Drive as the southern boundary and the four oh five freeway as the major eastern boundary, with the exception of the community of Van Nuys, which is kept whole in the district. Changes to District Four include removing all of the west valley, which includes the Taft High School attendance area and the communities of Tarzana and Encino, while adding Sherman Oaks, Studio City, and Valley Village. Changes to District One include keeping a portion of the city of Gardena, using the one ten freeway as the major eastern boundary, and including all of the Los Angeles High School Attendance Zone. Changes to District Two include removing Mount Washington and Angelino Heights while consolidating portions of South Los Angeles. Changes to District Five include adding Mount Washington, Angelino Heights, and portions of Hollywood east of Highland Avenue, while losing portions of South Los Angeles. And lastly, changes to District Seven in the south include minor changes to the northern boundaries, mostly along high school attendance zones and the one ten freeway, while keeping the city of Gardena split at Rose Curran's Avenue. These are the draft maps for your consideration. The commission must send the final map recommendation to the city council by October twenty-ninth. Your input today and in the next two weeks is critical to help inform the commission to make the best decisions possible. What type of public input are we seeking from the community? We want to know what you think. Are you in support of any of the draft maps and why? Is there a particular district or district configuration that you would like or don't like? Let us know. What changes would you like to see made to the current draft maps? You can also go to our website at redistricting twenty twenty-one dot L A city dot org forward slash L A U S D R C to use our online mapping tool where you can draw and submit your own maps to the commission.
There are four ways for the public to provide input into the commission's process. The first way is to attend a public hearing like you are doing today and tell us what you'd like to see in a map. The second way is through the public comment form on our website. The third way is to submit your map to the commission, and the rules and procedures for doing so are on the website as well. Lastly, the commission will be providing an online mapping tool to help the public draw their own maps.
Thank you again for attending our meeting today. To contact the commission, you can reach us by email, phone, on our website, and you can follow us on social media. Our website is located at redistricting two zero two one period L A city period O R G forward slash L A U S D R C. On our webpage, the Google Translate button in the upper right corner is available to translate the website into multiple languages. On our homepage, you can easily RSVP for a public hearing, join any live Zoom webinars, and provide us with public comment with the click of a button shown in the middle of the page. The homepage menu also allows you to access the commission's documents and tools. The public comment page under community engagement is where you can RSVP for a public input hearing, easily submit written comments, or you can email us at L A U S D period redistricting at L A city period O R G. Additionally, our online mapping tool on the MapTitude software page is where you will be able to draw suggested maps to submit to the commission. This page also provides the rules and procedures for presenting a map. We hope you visit our website at redistricting two zero two one period L A city period O R G forward slash L A U S D R C. And we hope you participate in future meetings with us.
We are holding three public input hearings to get feedback from the public on the draft maps. The hearings will take place on Monday, October fourth at six thirty P M, Wednesday, October sixth at six thirty P M, and Saturday, October ninth at eleven A M.
Every public input hearing will have Spanish interpretation available using the Zoom interpretation button at the bottom of your screen. We will also provide interpretation in twelve other languages if we receive a request at least seventy-two hours before the meeting. When providing comments in any language other than English, please pause every two sentences to allow your interpreter to interpret your comment back to English. Feel free to contact us by email or phone, and don't forget to check out our website and follow us on social media. Now we will move into the public comment period of the meeting. Each member of the public wishing to speak before the commission will have up to three minutes. Please select the raise hand option to speak and wait to be called on. When we call on you, please state your name and the boundaries of your community of interest as an introduction to your comments. Once again, thank you for attending today's public hearing for the L U S D Redistricting Commission and for participating in this very important process.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. Uh, as, as a reminder for today, uh, to be consistent with the process uh, and ensure everyone has time to speak today is we have um two minutes for all public speakers. That's what we did on Monday, so two minutes for all public speakers. Thank you once again. And let's now begin public testimony. Um, and as a reminder, each uh presenter is allowed up to two minutes per speaker. Uh, and I will now go to Gladys that will begin the process on the instructions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In conformity with state law A B three sixty-one, September sixteen, twenty twenty-one, and due to concerns over COVID nineteen, the Los Angeles Unified School District Redistricting Commission meetings will be conducted entirely telephonically. Members of the public who would like to offer public comment via Zoom webinar on the items listed on the agenda should click on the raise hand function to request to speak. Members of the public who would like to offer public comment via phone on the items listed on the agenda should call one six six nine two five four two five two and use meeting ID number one six one zero seven seven four nine nine one and then press pow. Press on again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. At this moment, we do have members of the public that would want to give public comments today, and I'd like to turn it over to the city attorney for further directions for the public.
Thank you, Gladys. One second. To members of the public calling in to, to provide public comment to the commission, when it's your turn to speak, we will announce the last four digits of your phone number, or if you're dialing in with a black number, then we'll announce you as caller number one or caller number two. When we announce your number or identifying information, then you are live in the meeting and it's your turn to speak. Please immediately press uh star six to unmute yourself. You'll have up to two minutes to speak total. After we announce how many minutes you have to speak, please begin providing your comments to the commission. We'll let you know when all of your time is up and we're moving on to the next speaker. Uh, please remember that you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on the agenda item, or if we can't tell whether you're speaking on the items, you will get one brief warning from me or the chairperson. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or again straight off topic, you will be cut off and will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. To members of the public calling in to speak, we understand that you might be listening to the broadcast of the meeting on the internet or another device, because there is a time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast phone so that you hear when we announce your last four digits of your phone number or other identifying information so that you can meet star six. Otherwise, we might think you are no longer online and move on to the next speaker. Finally, if you are also listening to the broadcast of the meeting over the internet or another device, please immediately turn down the volume of the broadcast on that device to avoid feedback and confusion because of the time delay. Thank you.
Okay, with that said, we can go to the first public speaker. Caller by the name Jessica Panduro. Can you please unmute yourself?
Hello, Commissioner, are you, you able to hear me?
Yes, proceed.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, thank you for all the amazing work that you are doing. I know that this is really important and it's going to be impacting the next ten years. I am here to continue to uplift the need of District Two to remain in the configuration that it currently is. Eastside residents fought ten years ago to create a district where we can actually be represented. That is what District Two currently is. It was not an easy process, and here we are today defending and requesting you to keep District Two as it is. Through this map, District Two has been able to lead the fight for educational equity with the support of students, parents, residents from the community. Our fight for equity is not only for District Two but for all of our students in L A U S D. In the last ten years, we have worked together as District Two to be a voice for racial equity and educational justice to undo the historical neglect that our students have faced. So again, thanks for your time, and I ask again to keep District Two as it currently is to continue this fight towards racial equity and educational justice for all of our students of L A U S D. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Reyna Sados Mackay. Can you please unmute yourself?
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you, thank you so much. Um, thank you for, so much for organizing these very helpful meetings. Uh, I have been attending and I am um learning a lot about the process. Thank you for that. Uh, I'm a parent of two uh students of L A U S D, one who is currently in fifth grade, and I'm an advocate for public education equity and access to free and public education for all. Not only am I an advocate for public education, I'm an immigrant, Latino heritage, and I've been a resident of Los Angeles for over forty years. During the pandemic, I became aware of all the inequities that students were experiencing throughout the district, and I became involved. I am now the education chair of the Woodland Hills Warner Center Neighborhood Council. However, I am here speaking for myself and not on behalf of the neighborhood council. I'm here speaking as a parent, and I'm here to support draft map number two uh in Woodland Hills. I believe that keeping the district together so that we can have one representative instead of two would be very helpful to our community, and it would really bring focus to our local schools instead of having the division that we now have. We were divided by two different representatives, and the parents here do not have the ability to uh collaborate with each other and advocate for our, the students because we have two different representatives. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Marisol. Can you please unmute yourself?
Hi, my name is Marisol Rosales. Um, commissioners, um, and I am a member of Community Coalition and the People's Black. I live in South LA, and my children, I have four children that attend San Miguel Elementary School in Que Pueblo Unido. I'm a graduate of L A U S D and organized as a, as a high school student with Community Coalition and policies like Seni to get more funding for our schools. Having a unified district that wants the same things for our Black and Brown students is important. Please consider keeping our districts intact so we can continue to fight for more equitable funding on a unified front. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Julie Current Stain. Can you please, can you please unmute yourself?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can proceed.
Thank you, thank you. Um, your, your recommendations uh to the city council is very important. I know that it's not the final word. When I was Board of Education president many years ago, I went to the city council asking for uh board representation and helping to give advice on redistricting. Um, although it ended up being just advice, I was hoping there would be more than that. I was on the Board of Education for twenty-two years, so I saw redistricting done many times. Uh, I would hope that gerrymandering is not used to disenfranchise school board members and also that the districts um are, um, have continuity and are compact. I noticed that in your information. It's important for the students and for the parents to have easy access to the board members. Many, many years ago, the San Fernando Valley was actually divided in half between the Sepulveda Boulevard, San Diego Freeway, East and West. Uh, I looked at the maps. They look similar in some ways. I'm not sure which map was better, possibly uh map two. Uh, but the San Fernando Valley, there should be a cutoff at the southern portion, so it doesn't go into the city. It's very difficult. At one time, when I was a board member of a particular district, I think it was four, I represented from Chatsworth High School to Westchester High School. Very, very difficult to get out to your schools. So my hope is that this is not purely on political lines because I've seen it done over and over again, and that uh redistricting is done in a way that will always help the school communities and make it possible for board members to serve their community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Gloria Rodriguez. Can you please unmute yourself?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me well?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you so much for um allowing me to speak this evening, commissioners. Uh, I am a parent uh that belongs to District Five. Um, I have um I am a product of L A U S D. I'm forty-seven years old, very proud of the city of Los Angeles. And I am here tonight asking you to consider uh for our District Five, uh map one B. Um, this uh map, it looks to me like it would finally um bring the equity that we need in our, in our community for our city and for our students. Um, through these years, our communities in the surrounding areas of Huntington Park and Huntington Park have been left behind. Um, and voices are not being heard, and there is uh clearly that there's a lot of equity that needs to be and it needs to be seen, not just, uh, we don't need to just speak about it. It needs to actually be seen. And so I'm here representing uh those parents that do not have a voice tonight. Um, and we clearly don't have as much representation um in these meetings from our community. Uh, but um I'm just asking for you to consider a map one B for our community in Huntington Park and the surrounding areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Maria Cubarrubias. Can you please unmute yourself? Caller by the name Maria Cubarrubias. Can you please unmute yourself?
Si, buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes. Si la escuchamos, dos oraciones a la vez. Proceda.
Uh, mira, soy una mamá del distrito escolar de, de escolar de Los Ángeles y aquí del distrito cinco y represento yo a mi hijo y a todos los hijos de esta comunidad de Huntington Park.
Hi, my name is uh Maria Cubarrubias, and I'm a mother here at the uh uh I reside in the school district, uh District Five, and I represent my child as well as other children and students in Huntington Park. Proceda.
Pido que se nos tome en cuenta que el distri, que en el mapa, del mapa uno B si ha elegido y que seamos representados como se nos merece a todos en este distrito cinco.
So I'm requesting, uh requesting that you consider map one B uh to be selected so that we can receive that representation that we need and we deserve here at District Five.
Y que seamos con debido respete equitativamente en los términos que nos muestra en toda nuestra población y que así tengamos la mejor representación que se nos merece.
With all due respect, uh, we'd like for you to uh consider uh and when making a decision so that it could be something that is fair, uh, something that is uh justice for everyone and the population in this District Five, something that we deserve.
Huntington Park está dispuesto a apoyar en todo lo que se requiera nosotros los padres para poder así representar siempre en, en el L A U S D. Muchas gracias.
So myself and everyone else here in Huntington Park um are ready to support the parents and this area are ready to support uh L A U S D. Thank you for your time.
Muchas gracias por su comentario. Thank you for your comment. Next caller by the name Norma. Can you please unmute yourself? Norma, can you please unmute yourself?
Si, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Norma Santiago. A los comisionados le doy gracias por escucharlos. Yo soy una mamá del distrito cinco. Pero quería decirles de la manera más atenta que nosotros nos encontramos ahorita reunidos para apoyar a todos ustedes para que hagan la mejor decisión. Nos tomen en cuenta y que nuestra voz escuche y que dejen el mapa en uno B para que tomemos decisiones con nuestra comunidad y tener mejores escuelas, ya que no las tenemos porque nunca se nos ha escuchado.
Norma, perdón. Déjame un momento para que pueda traducir Andrés lo que ha dicho.
Perdón.
Hello, uh hello, everyone here at uh members of the board. I would like to uh my name is Norma Santos, and I would like to just mention that um you have my support. I am from District uh Five, and we find ourselves at this point on a crossroad where every one of us are, are supporting. We're united, we're supporting, and we are wanting to we would like for you to hear our voices. Our voices need to be heard and to please select uh map one B, and this way um the decisions that you make can benefit the students in the school district. Proceda.
Que tengamos representante que nos haga sentir que estamos apoyados porque no ha habido ningún representante nos apoye en estas ciudades, ya que tenemos las escuelas en malas condiciones. Y yo les pido de favor, así como venimos ahorita a que nos escuche nuestra voz. Nosotros estamos dispuestos a compartir con ustedes y ayudar en todo lo que sea necesario para que tomen una mejor decisión, y gracias a todos los representantes.
I feel that representation uh throughout the years, uh have, I feel that these um, we have been unsupported. The people that have been selected in order to support us don't really present us. They don't really represent us, and they don't support us. So all through the years and the cities, uh they have this type of representatives. Now I ask for um your support because our schools are in very poor condition because of these decisions, and I would like for you to uh listen to our voice, our opinions, and we share with you. We're ready to support you and help us uh to better, for a better decision for all of us. Thank you.
Era todo, Norma? That was all.
Muchas gracias por su comentario. Thank you for your comment. Next caller by the name Cruz. Next caller by the name Cruz, can you please unmute yourself? Caller by the name Cruz, can you please unmute yourself? Okay, we will go to the next caller. Caller by the name Salvador Diaz, can you please unmute yourself? Caller by the name Salvador Diaz, can you please unmute yourself? Okay, next caller. Caller by the name Susana M, can you please unmute yourself?
Si, hola, muy buenas tardes, comisionados.
Hello, good evening, everyone. This is Susan M. Proceda.
Sí, mi nombre es Susana Martínez y soy mamá de tres hijos y vivo en el Distrito Cinco.
My name is Susana Martínez and I'm a mother of three and I live in District Five.
Bueno, estoy hablando en nombre de mis tres hijos y mío y de mi comunidad. Yo vivo en el área de Huntington Park.
And I am speaking for my three children as well as the community of Huntington Park.
Me gustaría, señores comisionados, que el mapa uno B sea elegido.
So I'm asking this commission to select Map One B.
Esté representado por personas como yo de mi comunidad y, y que estas personas tomen mejores decisiones que benefician.
I would like for you to choose a representative that represents the community, such as myself or someone like me that understands the community and for everyone's benefit.
Que beneficien nuestras escuelas y comunidades.
Disculpen, dijo escuelas y qué más?
Y comunidades.
Comunidades.
Y comunidades. Espero que tomen en cuenta nuestras voces. Muchísimas gracias.
This decision will not only benefit the schools but our whole community. And I hope you take in consideration and hear our voices when we give our opinion. Thank you so much.
Muchas gracias por su comentario. Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Jessica Sosa, can you please unmute yourself?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre, buenas noches, mi nombre es Jessica Sosa.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Sosa.
Soy la madre del Distrito Cinco y me gustaría este, que tomaran en consideración el uno B, el mapa uno B, porque, para que nos represente alguien que realmente este, que alguien realmente este, nos tomen en cuenta como comunidad.
I'm a mother from District Five and I am requesting for you to consider Map One B. This way, you would take account what our community is asking for. Excuse the interpreter, there were some parts there that I was not able to hear because of the phone. Proceda.
Nada más este, eso es todo. Gracias y este, soy de la, de la comunidad de Huntington Park. Gracias.
Well, that was all. And again, I'm representing the community of Huntington Park. Thank you.
Muchas gracias por su comentario. Thank you. Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Maria, can you please unmute yourself?
Muy buenas noches, señores comisionados. Mi nombre es María Olivo.
Good evening, everyone. The commissioners today. Thank you for this time. My name is María Olivo. Proceda.
Soy madre representante del Distrito Cinco. En esta noche soy la voz de mis hijos y mi comunidad.
A mother and I represent, and I'm a resident from District Five and also represent my children and the rest of the children in the community. Proceda.
Por lo, por, por lo tanto estoy pidiéndoles a ustedes que el mapa uno B sea el indicado y designado para nuestra comunidad.
I request that Map One B be selected for the benefit of our community.
El cual, con el cual tendríamos la oportunidad de que alguien que conozca nuestras necesidades como, como distrito, que sea alguien que se interese por mejorar, mejorar la educación, la infraestructura de, de una comunidad que no es nada más Huntington Park, sino que son muchísimas.
This way, by choosing this map, you can choose someone who represents us, someone that understands us, someone that knows our needs and represents us because this way we can make sure that this would benefit the schools. And I'm not talking about just Huntington Park. I'm talking about the surrounding areas as well.
Muchísimas gracias y dejamos en sus, dejo en sus manos la decisión más importante porque esto conllevará a, a un manejo de un distrito por el, el transcurso de diez años. Por favor, tomen una decisión adecuada para todas estas comunidades que necesitamos de ustedes. Muchísimas gracias.
And I want to thank you. Apagas el micrófono, María. Okay. I want to thank you all for your time. And I just want to emphasize that this is a very important decision that you have in your hands. You are going to decide who manages this district for the next ten years. And this is very important. So take the appropriate decision, make the appropriate decision that will meet our needs in our community. Thank you so much.
Muchas gracias por su comentario. Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Salvador Diaz, can you please unmute yourself?
Si, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Salvador Díaz y gracias al comisionado que me da la oportunidad de hablar hoy día. Este, he vivido en esta comunidad de Wallnampar por los últimos cincuenta y seis años. Y yo pienso que el dividir nuestro distrito en, en, en dos nos va a ocasionar más gasto de dinero.
Permítame.
Hello, everyone. My name is Salvador Díaz and I want to thank you commissioner for giving me this opportunity to speak before you today. I have been a resident from this district for fifty-six years. And I just want to say that if you divide this district in two, then it's gonna have some detrimental effects. Salvador, diga otra vez cuáles son los efectos.
Yo estoy, yo quiero pedirle al comisionado que mi distrito se quede como está. Ya que lo que necesitamos es tener a, a los miembros de, del, del distrito que nos dé una mejor educación para nuestros hijos, nuestras comunidades y que los, y que la voz de los padres sea escuchada.
I want to add that this district should be left alone the way it is now. What we need is that the school district members make the right decision so that we receive better education at school and also our voice of the parents, the parents' voice be heard. That's what we, what we want. Proceda.
Hay que pensar en, en el, en la buena educación y alta educación que tengan nuestros hijos. Que nuestras escuelas llegue el dinero como debe de llegar a, a los niños y no tener un representante nuevo que solamente vaya por sus intereses personales, ya que esto ha sucedido por muchas y muchas décadas.
I want you to think about when you choose a representative, we need someone that will bring superior quality education to our school districts. We want to make sure that these funds get to the school districts so that our children can benefit from it. We don't want another new representative that has his own agenda, his own interests before the benefit of the community. This has been going on for years, for decades.
Hemos tenido este, este mapa por muchas y muchas décadas. La tenemos juntas, nuestros negocios, tenemos juntas nuestras escuelas, tenemos nuestros hijos cerquitas de nuestras escuelas y también el comercio a donde nosotros asistimos. No es difícil este, controlar un distrito donde se tiene empatía con, con la educación de nuestros hijos, se tiene empatía con la voz de los padres y se tiene empatía con los representantes trabajando juntos para el bien de nuestros hijos, los padres y la comunidad.
We've had this map for decades, just the way it is. Businesses are united, they're together, they're kind of like a, the school, the schools are all clustered together, the businesses together, the commerce is together. It works. And we don't need a, we need to, for you to understand that we don't need, excuse the interpreter, we need to, to manage, someone to manage. It's not difficult to manage this district. It's not difficult to manage this district as long as you have empathy. Empathy for the school district and the children, empathy for the voices of the fathers and all the representatives in the community that are united and be listened to.
Por lo tanto, yo quiero que mi distrito se quede igual, pero que sí traigamos lo mejor para la educación de nuestros hijos, los padres y la comunidad. Muchas gracias.
Therefore, what we do need is better education, the voices of the fathers and representatives of the community to be heard. Thank you.
Muchas gracias por su comentario. Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Lily Tockner, can you please unmute yourself?
Yes, good evening. Thank you for listening. I am a parent with two high school children in District Four. And I would like to request that no changes be made at this time. We are very content and satisfied with our board member and our needs are being met. We have excellent support. And you know, the, the families, they're on a continuum. They go from Lanai or Encino to Portola to Taft and he's familiar with our needs, our board member, Mr. Melvoyn. And most of the families conduct their business and their lives west of the four oh five. And these districts, you know, they should be kept as is. And undergoing a huge construction as we are at Taft, it's, would be a step back to just bring in somebody brand new and unfamiliar with what we're dealing with. So I'm in favor of leaving the district as is, District Four as is. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Belly, can you please unmute yourself?
Buenas noches, comisionados. ¿Si me escuchan?
Sí, proceda.
Mi nombre es Belila Betanzo. Soy mamá del Distrito Cinco. Tengo tres hijos que asisten a las escuelas de Huntington Park.
Andrés, you unmute.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Belly Betantos. I'm from District Five. I have three children in the school district. And I live in the area of Huntington Park. Proceda.
Pido que se nos respeta y nos tomen en cuenta apoyando el mapa uno B.
I request for you to support us and Map One B.
Para que sea representado por alguien que nos tome en cuenta a nuestra comunidad del sureste.
And we ask to, or request that you choose a representative that understands the community in the southeast.
Porque también nuestros niños del sureste merecen mejores oportunidades y mejor educación.
Because the children in southeast area also deserve great education, quality education.
Nosotros no necesitamos una persona que esté en el puesto, ya que nunca hemos tenido ninguna ayuda del personal que ahorita está en este momento.
We do not need a new representative with this new position because we have never received a support regardless of who is in that position.
Y es hora de cambiar a una persona que no tiene empatía para las ciudades, para los niños, para nuestra comunidad del sureste.
It's time to change and have a representative that has empathy, not someone that does not share that empathy. Someone that would have empathy for the children of the southeast area.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias por su comentario. Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Juan Carlos, can you please unmute yourself?
Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, proceed.
Okay, thank you. As a, oh, hi, my name is Juan Carlos. As a current Eset resident, I really just want to emphasize the importance of keeping District Two together, together as is right now. And this is just because of all, we have the same concerns and these are things related to our neighborhoods. We also share the same solutions. And so it's important that Lincoln Heights is counted together with District Two. Just so that we can keep fighting for these same solutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Lourdes, can you please unmute yourself?
¿Si me escuchan?
Sí, proceda.
Bueno, yo creo que este, buenas tardes a todos. Mi, mi preocupación es en el, por qué división de las, de la, de nuestra comunidad. Yo creo que en eso debemos estar pensando en nuestros niños y no esa división de, de comunidad. Aunque siempre nosotros nos sentimos muy, muy desamparados porque nuestra comunidad, yo, nosotros estamos en el sur de Los Ángeles y somos los que menos nos dan servicios a nuestros niños. Y ahorita esta división, yo creo que es, es más preocupante para nosotros.
Permítame, Lourdes.
Sí.
No sé, no quiero que se me olvide.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lourdes. Good evening, everyone. I am, I do have one concern that I want to share with everyone. I want you to know that we don't need our district to be divided. What we need is for you to think about our children. We have always felt that we are the ones that have been the forgotten ones. We have been the ones that have been marginalized, marginalized. And we feel like the school district, the children in the school district has always been left as second. Proceda.
Sí, y es como les digo que ahorita, por ejemplo, nuestros niños, yo tengo dos niños especiales. Entonces es más, es más triste para ellos que no están recibiendo los servicios que ellos necesitan. Y otra de las cosas, yo creo que en este mapa nos debieron de tomar en cuenta a nosotros los papás, a la comunidad, que haya más este información en las escuelas, porque en este caso nomás lo es, yo creo que lo están tomando las personas que están más arriba. las personas que están más arriba, pero no nos toman en cuenta como comunidad.
I have two special needs children and it is so sad that they are not receiving the services that they need, that are so important. And just consider the parents, consider the students. Write down the information that you're receiving, take it in, all this information. And don't be taking down only the information of other people that are up there. We just feel that we need to be heard. Proceda.
Y esa es mi preocupación, entonces yo creo que... Primero, antes de poner esas mapas, quiero que se tomen en cuenta mucho a los papás o siempre cada... cada ley que estén pasando, entonces tómenos en cuenta porque nosotros somos nuestra comunidad. Nosotros somos las voces de nuestra comunidad. Muchas gracias, buenas noches.
So my main concern is before you make any changes to the maps, take time to consider the opinions of the parents before you even make changes in laws and policies. Remember, we are the community, we are the voice. Thank you.
Muchas gracias por su comentario. Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Karina Macia, can you please unmute yourself?
Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Great. Thank you commissioners for your time this evening. My name is Karina Macias, I'm a council member for the city of Huntington Park. As you've heard tonight, you heard from a great number of community members from the southeast asking for change in District 5. You have a tough choice ahead and it's understandable, it won't be easy. But the reality of Map 2 is that those lines are gerrymandered. Those lines aren't just lines, that if they continue another decade, we continue to get the short end of the stick for the southeast and for all of our schools and our students. I want our youth to believe that one day they can be elected in the district that they currently live. Right now, that is not a reality and it can be a reality with Map 1B and the possibility, as I mentioned last time, to look at Map 1A and meet halfway. Thank you again for your time and I look forward to continue to join these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Maria, can you please unmute yourself?
Hello, muy buenas noches, mi nombre es María Contreras. Estoy agradeciendo a aquellos comisionados por su gran esfuerzo en siempre estarnos escuchando.
Good evening everyone, this is María Contreras and I would like to thank everyone, all the commissioners here, all the members for taking the time to listen to us today.
Totalmente agradecida y pues estoy aquí para apoyar el mapa 1A.
I totally appreciate all your efforts and I'm here to support Map 1A.
Miro que toda la gente está apoyando el mapa 1B. Sé que en mi comunidad hay mucha gente que amoya, que apoya el mapa 1A, pero desafortunadamente es gente que está trabajando, gente que no tiene internet y no puede conectarse. Creo que toda mi comunidad, mi comunidad está apoyando más el mapa 1A. Estoy de acuerdo con Juan Carlos que dice que dejemos el distrito 2, pero en realidad es porque el mapa 1A es el que más se asimila a lo que teníamos anteriormente.
So again, I'm here to support Map 1A. I'm hearing a lot of comments, my community of people that support Map 1B. Sometimes the lack of online wifi and other information that they don't have any access to. But I understand that most of the community is supporting 1A. I agree with Juan Carlos to leave Map 2 alone and not to be divided. And I assure that this is something that I would like to, for you to be assessed first. Proceda.
Sí, y desafortunadamente lo que miro que todos los distritos tenemos las mismas necesidades. Queremos ver a todos nuestros estudiantes que tengan éxito. Queremos ver que nuestros estudiantes alcancen la mejor educación que se pueda tener. So en los mapas es la primera base para que se encuentre toda la educación y se pueda representar mejor y sea justificado y que tenga la justicia para cada uno de nuestros estudiantes que se lo merecen.
I understand all the districts have the... Or these two districts have the same needs. In order for our children to have success in life, they have, they need better education. In order to make this possible, we need better education. So I would like to have someone represent, someone that understands our children who deserve better.
Miro que las barreras de crecimiento y apoyo para nuestras comunidades es muy grande. No podemos seguir así, tenemos que cambiar. Cada diez años hay oportunidad de que se cambie y se haga un crecimiento en nuestras comunidades, en nuestras escuelas para beneficio de nuestros estudiantes. También me gustaría recalcar lo que dijo la comisionada la antenochas anterior de que hay muchos papás que están trabajando y no es posible que estén aquí para dar su comentario público, pero ellos también cuentan y cuentan porque trabajan y se esfuerzan mucho para sus estudiantes, para que tengan lo mejor.
I realize there are so many obstacles for this community to have or to find growth and to progress. And every 10 years, we have this opportunity in our hands for our schools to... Our schools and our students to have the support they need for growth. I also want you to consider, and the commissioner mentioned this a couple of meetings before, about, or there was a comment about so many parents cannot make it to these meetings. They wish they could do public comments and be here and represent, but they're working. So they are working hard for their children to have a better future. Proceda.
Gracias. Es por eso que también le dijo, le dejo a los comisionados de tarea que en un futuro también, de aquí a diez años, en estos diez años se puede educar a nuestros estudiantes con esto mismo, saber de qué se trata los mapas, de qué alcance tienen los mapas. Todo esto para nuestros estudiantes, para que ellos en diez años puedan alzar su voz, ya que sus papás están trabajando, sean los propios estudiantes que hablen y ellos vivos digan las necesidades que tienen. Entonces es de suma importancia que escuchen también a nuestros estudiantes, ya que nuestros estudiantes son nuestra voz y es nuestro futuro y el futuro de aquí y ellos serán los próximos comisionados que estarán ahí. Muchas gracias.
So I want to give you some more homework and the homework is that make it a goal to educate children, the students, about these maps and the process so that they could be the voice in 10 years, so that they can have that strength. Because this is very important, these are the children of the future and they must be heard and in the future they will be a lot more educated. Again, they are our future. Thank you so much.
Muchas gracias por su comentario. Thank you very much for your comment. Once again, if people from the public that would like to offer public comment, please raise the hand function to request to speak.
Let's wait a couple, there we go.
Caller by the name Maria E. Gómez, can you please unmute yourself?
¿Me escucha? Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Mi nombre es María Elena Gómez. Soy un papá de aquí del Distrito 5 y estoy representando a todas las personas que no pudieron asistir a estas juntas y me gustaría que nos escucharan para beneficio de todos en común y consideraran el mapa 1B.
Hello everyone, my name is María Elena Gómez and I am a parent in District 5. I am here to represent the rest of the parents that were not able to make it here today and I would like for you to consider Map 1B.
Escuché que algunas personas que les gustaría que siguiera, se quedara como está el mapa que está ahorita, pero necesitamos cambios para mejorar toda la educación. Necesitamos la educación de los... Que sea mejor la educación de los estudiantes para mejorar la educación de todos los estudiantes y que se tome en cuenta el mapa 1B para el sureste de Los Ángeles.
Repita.
Sí.
Sureste de Los Ángeles, repita.
Sí, para... Me gustaría el que se tomar en cuenta el mapa 1B para el sureste de Los Ángeles.
Gracias. I would also like to state that I keep hearing that they want the districts to remain the same, other comments. However, there needs to be change, definitely for the better of education in schools and better quality education for students. And Map 1B does represent that for southeast area. Proceda.
Sí, también este me he sido voluntaria por muchos años y he visto la necesidad de las escuelas. En las escuelas pasa y pasa el tiempo, los años y las escuelas tienen... No tienen muchos servicios empezando con las necesidades más básicas. Entonces me gustaría que tomaran un cambio para que tuviéramos acceso a todos los beneficios que sean como iguales para todas las escuelas y ese es mi comentario. Muchas gracias.
So I have been a volunteer for so many years in the school districts. So I know and I understand the needs of the school districts. You go to those schools and you see that they don't even have the basic needs or services that other school districts have. So I believe that we need to have these schools be able to access the services that other schools have. Thank you.
Muchas gracias por su comentario. Thank you very much for your comment.
Let's wait a couple seconds before we close public comment and hear reflections from the commissioner. Okay, I think we could proceed and close public comment, Gladys.
Okay, we can go ahead and do that.
So I'd like to hear from Commissioner Hurtado and then Commissioner Dehan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So how do I begin? Well, look, this is for everybody, commissioners and people in the audience. So we've been listening to a lot of comments about leaving things as they are and making some changes. But let's consider the facts. Leaving the maps as they are, in some areas, people will be very happy because they've been happy for the last 10 years. That's a fact. Also, a fact is that leaving it as they are in some areas will leave people feeling that they've been left behind and now it's going to be another 10 years of being left behind. You know, how can anybody be happy with that outcome? If you're a parent who's in an area where everything is great, you know, if I lived in that area, I wouldn't be happy knowing that people in another area are feeling left behind. You know, we should be looking at how we can set up districts where everybody's happy. Now, I know that's impossible, it's not going to happen, but we need to work it toward that end. So again, the changes that, you know, considering, for example, Maps 1A and 1B, 1B being the preference, we don't know if people who lost certain... Certain territories, certain bounds, certain, you know, parts of what they had before, we don't know that that's going to end up in a bad result. We don't know that. So again, I think that what we have to do is consider change. The non-change will result in another 10 years of bad representation for the folks who are complaining about it now. So again, I just don't see how anybody can be satisfied leaving another 10 years like that. Now, I've gotten calls from some people, including some folks here who have told me that they hear what I'm saying. I appreciate that, but are you listening? I really think you need to listen. The area of the southeast is looking for change because they're not satisfied and leaving the things as they are will continue to be a bad thing for them. They're looking toward you, me, and everyone on this commission to do something to make that change. I guarantee that the people who are satisfied now, if they weren't, they'd be asking for change too. And I think it's up to us to consider that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hurtado. Now I have Commissioner Dehan.
Hi, thank you. Gracias a todos por estar aquí. I wanted to extend appreciation to everyone who spoke as well as everyone who's listening and I also wanted to mention, one of, a couple folks talked about how families aren't able to participate because of work or lack of internet access, which I completely understand. To the extent that they are able to access at least the website, I just wanted to uplift that there is the opportunity at any time to submit feedback via the Google form. And so if one is unable to participate in the actual meetings, there is that opportunity when your schedule permits to provide comments via the Google form. And so for those listening who know people who weren't able to join today, just wanted to share that so that there could be at least another avenue. Again, understanding the various challenges folks face in trying to participate in these things. And then I would be remiss if I did not take this time to say happy birthday to our chair. So wanted to say happy birthday to you. Thank you for seamlessly leading this meeting and not telling us it was your birthday, but a little bird's a talkie, so wanted to recognize your special day. And I'm hoping that your wish tonight is the same wish I'm wishing for and we have a good outcome in this document. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Luis.
Thank you, Commissioner Dehan. Yeah, I never, I never thought about when I planned this meeting. Do you have any other remarks or comments from commissioners? Okay, it seems we also don't have any speakers waiting either. Oh, here we go. We have Commissioner Hernandez.
Yeah. Good afternoon. Buenas noches a todos. Nomás les quiero decir gracias. Gracias por tomar el tiempo de acompañarnos esta noche para un proceso que es tan importante. Estamos escuchando y como dijo el comisionado Hurtado, este proceso no va a ser fácil, pero este... Gracias de nuevo por acompañarnos y más querían compartir esas palabras. I just wanted to thank the callers who joined us tonight for taking the time. We know that's important and it's not always easy and we're glad that regardless of their language of preference, they still came out this evening and look forward to having more participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. So as closing, I wanted to thank the attendees that have come out to both attend the meeting, give them public comment. We have one more Saturday of public comments. So if you have any friends, family, school employees, students, you know, residents, you know, voters, neighborhood council members, southeast leaders, leaders from all over the city to come out and just provide public comment before we begin to deliberate the process of making the recommendation to the city council. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and remind like other commissioners, there's other ways of engaging if you can't attend these meetings. We could always come to you and you could always follow up with our outreach director or executive director, all the information's on the website. Thank you once again. I'd like to get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you all.
Thanks, everyone. Happy birthday.
Did you have a question? Oh, I thought you had a question. Okay.
Good night and go Dodgers.